Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioner meeting for October 17th. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and Commissioner Molly to do the pledge. If you're able, please stand. Thank you.
Let us pray. God our Father, we come before you in God this evening. Thank you, God, for how you blessed and cared for and washed over us while we slumming and slept all last night. Thank you for waking up this morning to God. Give them the strength in their bodies. Thank you to God that all our families are yet alive. And Father, thank you to God for being this great country called the United States, to God. Thank you, God, for all that you've blessed us with, to God. As you look on those, to God, in the wars right now, God, in Israel, look on those, to God. It's all over, to God, having trouble with the wars. And God, continue to bless, to God, this county, look over it in the mighty way, look on every department, to God. Continue to bless us, oh God, as a team, to God, working together. As you, God, you've blessed this board, to God, in the mighty way. Help us to be able to solve all the problems that come before this board as you lead and guide our hearts and minds. And we offer you the thanks and the praise in Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Moving on to approval of minutes. Item number one, for the September 25th, 2023 special meeting, September 25th, final budget hearing, October 3rd, regular board meeting, October 5th, special meeting, and October 11th, special meeting. Are there any changes or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, how for a motion?
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll be pulling item number four for discussion. Is there any other at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we need a table number eight.
Okay. So we're looking at items two and three, five, six, and seven. Is there any discussion or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number four, approval of funding, approval of funding agreement between Swanee County and Meridian Healthcare Incorporated in the amount of $64,111 for the provision of mental health Baker Act and additional, and addiction services.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we've got actually two agreements, one's for what is stated about the healthcare piece, the mental healthcare piece. Also, there's another agreement in their packets that's about us letting them use our space, there's agreement for that. And so we need both approved if it's the wishes of the board.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
Is this something that we're, is state mandated that we do this?
This is, we contract them to provide the mental health services for us. And the donation of space is what are we pay, basically what we pay for their services for us, for the county. It's been doing that for a number of years, that format.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Perkins, the county has an obligation under the statutes to provide services such as this, Meridian's. Oh, my apologies.
Now pull it closer.
The county has an affirmative obligation to provide those services, such as how we pay for the state attorney's office, the public defender, et cetera. So Meridian's a contractor which contracts with all the local North Florida counties. And just like with the state attorney or the public defender, the office space part is our chip in to go to their budget and just ask for the $64,111 is our chip in towards their budget, same as all of our surrounding counties. First, we went to that obligation.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, who will assign to that, on the next committee? No one assigned to that?
I don't know. I don't think there's a committee. I think there's a private entity that we contract with. I don't think we're, I don't think we have an assignment of that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hale? I was just going to tell Commissioner, I believe the representatives were here during budget workshops. If I'm not mistaken, did they not say that they were full house at that time? They didn't have, for some of their other services, didn't the young ladies tell us that they?
Was it them or was that the battered?
That's what it was. I'm sorry. Yep, yep, yep.
I can't remember the name of it.
That's right. Yep.
Mr. Klepper, you have something?
Yeah, Moses Klepper, 1458100, second path. Couple of years ago, it come up about, and I know it was just recently passed, couple of months ago, I don't remember exactly. But the county gives them free rent. Am I right?
Yes, sir. That's what this is for.
And I don't have all them numbers, but I remember my argument two years ago, giving them free rent. If it was non, not-for-profit or nonprofit, I'd have no issue. The CEO makes over 500 grand a year, right? And here we are, taking taxpayers' funds and providing them free spot. And the argument y'all gave me, this board, it wasn't the exact same board, but the board gave me, was, was that they're obligated not to turn away any Baker Act or so forth. So now, I wouldn't aware of this 64 grand being in the pie too. I don't get that. We're giving them free rent. I don't remember the numbers, wish I had all my notes on that. But does anybody have the absolute, I mean, the value of that property?
I think 56.6 is the rental, the free rent annually.
Okay.
56.6 is the difference. And I'm not sure whether 64, 111.
And then we, don't we keep, excuse me, don't we keep up with the property and all that? There's got to be a value to that.
The maintenance.
Maintenance and all that.
Well, it's our assets, so I would assume that we do keep it up.
Well, when you, when I lease property, I got to keep it up.
Mr. Chairman, I do not think county maintenance maintains any of that facility. The power works guys do the lawn outside, but not interior, from my understanding.
Okay, so lawn, how much lawn service for it? What I'm trying to get at though, again, the CEO and all high-ranking individuals, they make better than, anyway, that $500,000 a year, you know, and then we're giving, giving. I think this is an opportunity to maybe tweak that down a little bit.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the history of this, but I know that the county has been doing this for a very long time. I don't see any other previous board members here, but Mandy, Greg, Mr. Scott, y'all know how long, I mean, how long has this been?
It's been happening for 15, 20 years.
A long, long time. Eric?
And just for the record, we provide the space as what, if I'm not mistaken, they want us to pay, and I'm not sure if it's the state or just Meridian, but obligation is for us to be paying for services that we, that the community receives. The building is our way of giving them monetary value for what the services they provide. But it's not, we would otherwise be expected, whether we did or not, to write a check, so.
I got a time specific here.
Sorry. Baker Act, if I'm right, it's three days, something. Have y'all got any information on how many of our county people go there? I mean, how much of that service is provided? You know, I mean?
Probably the sheriff could answer that question better than anybody.
I don't have enough money for 30 hours. Sometimes we have two free a day somewhere. It seems like it increases. So they do provide a very big insurance, too, as I can tell you that, they do.
Anyway, I just, like everything else, I want to see that we're getting the bank for the buck, just because we've been doing it for 15 years. You know, I've already had that argument on other things. You know, you get screwed, you keep doing the same thing. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. Is there any, any further discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale.
If I could clarify the record, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lynn, was that for both of the agreements that were put forward?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's two agreements.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, we needed that.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn for both agreements. Do I have a second?
Second. Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Hale for both agreements. Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Hale on both agreements. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Time-specific items, item number nine, at 5:35 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP 23-10-01 by Tower Engineering Professionals authorized agent for Glenda Sanford to be granted a special permit under section 14.111 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for an essential service, 199-foot monopole communications tower and associated equipment on property zone A1. Mr. Meeks.
You swear or firm testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but true self, you got it?
I do.
If there's anyone wishing to speak on this matter, would you raise your hand at this time?
Do you swear or firm testimony you're about to give us causes the truth, the whole truth, nothing but true self, you got it?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, what you have is a completed application for a request that proposes to construct a 199-foot monopole telecommunications tower on property zone Agricultural One. In your provided packet of information, you have the completed application along with supporting documentation for the request. You also have a resolution prepared for approval if the board so chooses to approve the request. The location of the property is at the northeast intersection of County Road 137 and US 27. It's across the street from the existing Dollar General. The application and requested, and required documentation show the need for additional coverage in the area. You have coverage maps that are submitted with the application that shows the existing coverage. And then you have the additional maps that show what the proposed coverage would be with the inclusion and approval of the telecommunications tower. I know there's been some concern since the storm, and I've had some conversations with Commissioner Lynn in regards to backup generation power. I did try to highlight in the construction plans, and I did put on my summary as part of the agenda item, that there is a proposed 30-kilowatt generator that will be on site for backup generation. I've also had conversations with Mr. Timmons, which is the representative that's here tonight. And he's assured me that that would be addressed. So the application and the supply documentation meets the requirements of the land development regulations. Staff recommendation would be for approval. You have a proposed resolution in your packet for such. Mr. Timmons is here on behalf of his company to answer any questions or cover anything that I have not addressed. The board does not have any questions of me at this time. I would enter the file into the record.
So admitted.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Is there any questions of Mr. Meeks at this time? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment.
Just for the record, I'd just like to say that I'm Harold Timmons.
Can you please, I'm sorry, can you start with your name, please?
I'm Harold Timmons. I represent Tower Engineering Professionals, Towers LLC and Verizon Wireless on this matter. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about our application.
Is this to provide a gap in coverage is why we're putting this here?
It's going to do two things. It's going to improve the coverage in an area that Verizon has designated as having poor coverage. It is also going to add capacity to the existing sites that are already operating in the county that connect with this particular site. So it serves two purposes.
Can you put one in my backyard?
It would be great if you, if there was a need, if Verizon said.
Oh, there's a need, I promise you. There's a very good need.
Well, thank you so much. We had two approved by you guys a year ago, and those two should be coming online late November, early December.
Are we going to put backup generation on those as well?
Every one of the Verizon sites and the Towers LLC sites have backup generators. But at the same time, the carrier is also responsible for providing their backup generation. So if a carrier wanted to locate on that structure, and your concern is that they need to have backup power, that was something that you'd probably catch at the building permit level and say, hey, you need to have a backup generator.
Now.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lynn.
Now, emphasize on that a little bit more. So you're saying, so if a tenant, are you saying if a tenant comes to you?
Right. See, the board is getting to review our application because it's brand new. So Verizon is showing its generator. If someone goes to co-locate on it and they file the building permit, that doesn't come before the board. If you want them to have a generator, someone has to say at that time, where is your generator? If they don't show one. But I really can't see a carrier not having a backup generator at this point in time, maybe earlier in the development of Towers. Because we've had projects that, where the carriers have gone back in, and all they've done is gone to sites that didn't have generators and add generators. So we've had generator projects, so they know the importance of it.
What I can tell you is, and I haven't confirmed this myself, but Tallahassee has confirmed it for us, is that post-impact of Hurricane Adelia, probably a four to six-mile circle around the city of Lavo, cellphone service was pretty much obsolete for three, four days.
Wow.
And it was due to no generator backup at Towers. So as Mr. Meeks stated, I've heard it, heard it, heard it to where, as the first thing I looked for was generator backup for your tower. And I did notice that it says proposed. Is that proposed or is that, that's going to happen?
No, that's going to happen.
Required?
Yes, that's going to happen.
And then my second thing would be for Mr. Meeks is, do we, let's hypothetically say Company B, he's Company A, Company B comes in and says, hey, we want to co-locate on that tower on our permitting process. Do we, do we see that Company B's permit on a co-locate?
It's just, it's just a general electrical permit application because the construction of towers already there, so it's really just location of an antenna.
So, board, I have spoken to Mr. Meeks about this, and matter of fact, I spoke to him again about it today. And something that we can get to later is, I want to see the board's opinion on getting Mr. Meeks, getting Mr. Morrison to see about amending our LDRs to require generator backup for telecommunications, whatnot, versus it just be?
Being part of the application process.
Yes, so that, so that in the event that Company B does want to come, and they are a telecommunications provider, that's, that generator backup. Now, that's not for this application, but this would be for your co-locate tenants going forward.
I don't think, I don't think the industry would blink an eye at a requirement like that, I'll be honest with you. I think it would go over very well.
I think some of the ones that haven't had it, maybe were grandfathered in.
Yeah, exactly.
In the loss of power. I mean, we saw widespread, 100%, I think, Swanee Valley Electric, our biggest power provider in the area, 100% outages.
Sounds like the perfect basis for a text amendment.
So we saw, you know, the storm we haven't seen in hundreds of years around here, so therefore, it's like, oh, maybe we need to address that. Some of those probably were grandfathered in. I agree with you. I don't think that in today's environment, they would blink an eye at a 20, 30, 40,000-dollar generator.
Right.
But pre 2000, some of them probably did.
Yeah, and they haven't either gotten back around to doing it, or they want to do it, and as they prioritize their capital, for whatever reason, that particular site or those sites just, you know, on the lower rung of their priority list. So, you know, there's a number of different factors that go into play, but it certainly sounds like, you know, an amendment of some sort to make, put that in writing. Because when we grab your ordinance, we are looking for what you require of us. And that's what we want to give you. We want to give you what you require. If you require it, it's no problem. Only time we have a little consternation is if we're doing it, we don't see it in writing, and then someone says, oh, and I want this. And then we go, well, we didn't see that in the ordinance. But we tend to bend and be flexible because we want our approval. So whatever you can put in there that clarifies exactly what you want is always good from our perspective.
With that, and I guess it's more for Ron, as the gentleman just stated, are we requiring, like when he applies, his company applies for this permit, are we requiring enough property, if you will, whatever, to accommodate A, B, C, D, and E providers to put generators on there? Is there enough there to do, or do we need to expand on that as we're looking at all this?
Most everything that is associated with a tower or their equipment is contained within whatever lease area it is, that is obtained on the original construction, which is typically about, let's say, about a 100 by 100 square is pretty standard across the board.
100 by 100 is the basic standard. You know, we get into highly developed areas, they can be smaller, but for the most part, 100 by 100 does everything that a site will need that's going to have three or four carriers. Because the, inside of that 100 by 100, like Verizon or whoever it is, they may have a concrete pad that's 10 feet by 15 feet, and then they'll set their four by six, four by eight generator right next to that. So you, there's enough room in there for that to happen three or four times.
Got you. So I think the discussion, maybe after we go through, finish this one, we can have a post discussion about LDR amendments and what those might look like.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we'll carry forward with this one if you'd like, pick that up later. Don't want to get you tangled up in that.
Any other questions, Mr. Timmons? Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak, public comment? Seeing none, I'll close, public comment. Is there any further board discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
I would just add that Mr. Timmons has been a regular here, but not near regular enough.
That's right.
I think we've seen him multiple times here in our county, in solemn holes, but we still got a lot of work for you to do, Mr. Timmons.
Lot of dead areas.
Let Mr. Meeks know what you're looking at, what areas you focus on. He can shoot me an email, and I can pass that on to our clients.
We will get with Mr. Meeks.
You hold the address now?
We will definitely get.
I know a lot of them myself.
We would definitely pass those dead areas in our respective districts along with Mr. Meeks, so that he can maybe shoot, shoot them to you, and you could potentially pass them up the chain, help our people.
I'll pass them up the chain.
Maybe get some better service.
That's what's going to happen.
That's right.
Thank you.
All you can do is ask.
And to elaborate more on that, but I think we've just seen how important it was with the storm.
Oh, yeah. Where's that? Mr. Meeks, did you have something else to add?
No, I was going, I was going to say that, you know, one thing I did notice is like not, just, you don't see a ton of towers located around the city limits, but if you will notice these taller structures, the old water towers and things, you'll find antennas that are located on there. So those were originally designed and built to, you know, to be like communication tower, but they can double as that. So I don't know what kind of backup generation that exists on those. That just made me think of it the other day when we were having that. I think you see the old city of Lavo water towers, have the antennas, and the one off of Duval has communication antennas on them, but you just don't know about the backup generation associated with that.
Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt resolution? Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Can we pick up the conversation?
Yes, sir.
About, I would, I would ask the board what your pleasure was about making an LDR amendment to require generator backup for, one, new towers, and then, number two, as Mr. Meeks said, co-locate tenants on those to have enough power to power their equipment in the event that there's power outage.
I think it's very simple, if that's the direction of the board. Section 14.11 kind of covers our telecommunications section of the LDRs. I think it's very simple, it's just adding text, requiring the backup generation for new construction as well as co-location. And it should take care of that. As far as what that language needs to be, I can get with Mr. Morrison, I think we can hammer that out.
Yeah, I mean, as Mr. Timmons said, he didn't think that in today's towns, any provider would blink an eye at that. So I don't think that we're going to, you know, push telecommunications providers away by requiring that, but, but putting it in there, they know upfront what we're expecting and what we'd like to see. And like he said, on the front end, they study what the requirements are, and they try to meet those on the front end versus.
Is there any way to go back and, to people that were granted, that's just a done deal?
Yeah, but like he did say, we have in the past had electrical-only applications for carriers that are adding generation power on existing towers. And that's all they do. The antennas are already there. They go back and they will routinely change those generators out, too. Second side of that is what we might want to think about, is you see in the resolution, we've always had a condition to add that the county has granted co-location on those towers. We might want to take care of that in a text amendment and delete that as a condition and just go ahead and make it a requirement upfront as well.
I agree.
Being, being we're going to look at that language, just an idea. It's not, it don't, it don't require an additional step. We're going to be going through the process anyway, so.
So I guess we'll direct Mr. Meeks and Mr. Morrison to come up with a text amendment.
If that's the consensus, yes, sir.
Is there consensus among the board to do that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is that height change? Wasn't there used to be a height associated with it, like at 100 feet or 80 feet far?
For, well, the language was, I think, that they required a co-location at a minimum, a distance that was minimum. At that time, it was established to be 90 feet. Before we come up with that number, I guess we can probably do some conversation. The county's never, never had to take advantage of that language, but the language exists. And I know that we've had some conversation. I know the conversation has been about other types of communication during, and events, you know, because we were without cellular service. Had we had radio availability, that would have been a great assistance as well. So having the availability to co-locate your equipment on some of these towers might provide additional help for the county as well.
That's why I mentioned, just make sure whatever we have done out there is still sufficient, in the event that we need to do that.
And sometimes it varies on the height of the tower. You know, years ago, the standard used to be construction of guide towers, and they were 300 foot. And then everything went to about 250, but now you see everything kind of hovering underneath that 200-foot level. So they have gotten shorter through the years.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Yeah, no problem.
Moving on to constitutional officer items, any constitutional officer, anything to add? Any staff items? He's getting to be like Jimmy Norris.
Did you compare me to Mr. Norris? Wow. No, just real quick, a couple of things. I put a rodeo flyer on your desk there, so Friday and Saturday night, one or both nights, come on out. Put you on a buck and bowl, maybe, see how you do. But no, come enjoy the rodeo. It's our third year. Have a great turnout. Every year, it's gotten bigger and better, every year, as the chamber would say, right? Christmas on the square. So anyway, just wanted to let you be aware of that. And two, we'll be bringing, we just sent a, the attorney sent an agreement to Brantford for review, and we'll be bringing back to you to make a permanent agreement with the town of Brantford for our funding and maintenance down there at their parks, so.
Good.
Moving forward with that. That was all I had, just wanted to mention the rodeo.
Mr. Molly's a cowboy, so if you need somebody around that.
Is that right? Okay.
He's a cowboy with a broke back.
And I did see an FSU bow tie up there. I'm not sure if that was in preparation for the end of the year. Anyway, I just, I thought I saw something up there.
This is the kind of treatment I get around here.
Y'all did beat a two and five Carolina, South Carolina.
Barely, barely, barely beat them.
I'll have the last laugh, I guarantee you.
Mr. Chairman, we need to find out from Mr. Furry, who's the title sponsor for the rodeo?
Mr. Furry.
I thought I told him better than that.
I'm sorry, I was up with Mr. Norris.
The title sponsor for the rodeo?
Title sponsor for the rodeo.
Pilgrim's Pride.
Pilgrim's Pride.
Our best community partner.
Thank you, Pilgrim's Pride.
Thank you.
And Visit Swanee and the Tourist Development Council is also a partner with that.
You see that on there?
It will be next time. Slight omission there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff items? Seeing none, moving on to item number 10, proclamations and presentation, presentation of Visit Swanee's new video, Economic Development Director Jimmy Norris and Marketing Coordinator, Ms. Carissa Sutter.
I was kidding, y'all didn't know what it was. Can y'all see that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody can see.
We're back. Sorry we missed you last time, we were actually working on our video, Economic Development Video at the last meeting. What we're here tonight to do is tourism, you know, we kind of jump back and forth, and so it takes a lot of work to put these things together. But we do appreciate you guys' support on all the stuff that we're doing. Chris is going to explain this, it's kind of her baby, and this project was different. It wasn't something that kind of came through our office, and she'll explain all that. But I also appreciate you guys, while I'm here, Business of the Year the other night, you know, we sponsor that event, and I don't see, I don't think any of the chamber guys are out here, but appreciate your participation in that and supporting our local businesses, especially through the, through the storm, so. Anyway, I'm going to introduce Ms. Carissa, and try not to throw the chairman under the bus, all right?
Why not, everybody else?
So a little bit of a height difference between me and Mr. Meeks, so need to adjust that microphone a little bit. After partnering with Visit Florida over the last several years and advocating for increased advertising support, Visit Florida decided to allocate some funding for video productions in every rural county in Florida. Cycle Here Media was selected by Visit Florida as a production company for this project. We compiled a wish list of activities and locations that we wanted to have featured in this video, and then we also created a schedule. Our filming schedule was initially set for three days, but due to rain, we had to condense it all into just two days. They filmed on August 17th and 18th, and we served as their guides as they filmed various areas. This video is different from the last one that we showed you, this one is called a sizzle reel. That means it's a short highlight video composed of quick clips accompanied by music, but no voiceover. We opted not to use models in this video, instead, we asked local residents to participate in order to provide an authentic overview of what Swanee County has to offer our visitors. We would like to extend special thanks to Commissioner White and his family for participating with us, also to Don Hale and his wife Patty, and also to Mandy Fredrickson for allowing us to borrow her grandchildren.
No.
Several other individuals were involved as well, so you may spot some familiar faces while you watch the video. As I mentioned, this video moves really quickly, and we don't want you to be playing a guessing game while you're watching it, so I'm just going to tell you the locations that you'll see. We filmed at Little River Springs, Swanee River, Swanee County Courthouse, Amazing Grace Gal and Company, Daily Cup of Joe Coffee Company, The Rustic Loft, Craves Boutique, Swanee County Historical Museum, Spirit of the Swanee Music Park, The 406, Heidi's Cupcakery, Branford Farm Stand, Heritage Park, Our Place Pizzeria, First Federal Sports Complex, and Swanee River State Park. So now we're going to show you what we did. Visit Florida has given us full rights to the video footage, so we can use any piece of that video at any time in future videos or any future advertising. This video will also be on our YouTube channel, as well as Visit Florida's YouTube channel. You can find our channel by looking up Visit Swanee County. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I know it goes by really quick, but you guys were there. How many hours did we spend shooting that one second shot, right? So...
Forty gallons of gas.
Forty gallons of gas. I'm not sure, I'm sure there's a line somewhere, you can, you can add that in, but it just takes a lot to do that, that production, and so we appreciate, but she was kind of in charge, she did all the work, so she deserves all the credit. But we do appreciate Visit Florida for the first time, you know, they're kind of putting some dollars forward here, because all of that didn't cost us, you know, Swanee County didn't have to pay for any of that. And we think it's a real good, neat, upbeat, positive piece, and it shows some different slices, and I would invite everybody, if you haven't visited some of these locations, please do, these are all our local businesses here, go, go visit them and say you saw the video, so. And if you see it out there, you see it on YouTube, please share, like it, comment, whatever it is you can do, Chris will be putting it out. The more views that it gets, the better it helps us here in Swanee County. So appreciate you guys, appreciate everybody here that supports us, so.
Well, I'd just like to take a minute to thank you and Carissa, because I know y'all spent a lot of time on that, and it's not just, it's not eight to five thing, so they put in a lot of time and effort into that for our county, and, I mean, I know it's their job, but they go above and beyond, I think, a lot of times to what most people normally would, and they have our county at heart, and I just want to say we appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Excellent. And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd love to mention that the gentleman throwing the fishing pole there, Mr. Ron Riles, he's one of our, just a tremendous citizen here in Swanee County that has, some would say a handicap, I don't think he does, I mean, he just finished 40th in the Bassmasters, you know, and he lives right here in Swanee County, and he's, was willing to come out and donate his time to be...
It's such a pleasure, such a pleasure to work with. You guys probably didn't even realize that technically is handicap, he gets around, he has his own wheelchair, but he goes, he competes on a professional level. He was, he brought his boat out, and he actually, we had a bunch of footage of him actually fishing that day on the river, and just did it with such grace and dignity and a great smile on his face, so.
Super nice guy.
Yeah, super nice, and offered up anytime we want to do anything to participate, and just made you feel good, so. He, and Commissioner Hale helped us line that up, too, so thank you for that.
Thank him.
Yes, sir. Yep. We forgot your doll, thank your doll for being there, too.
That's right. Good for adoption, if they want it.
Moving on to commissioner items, I've got one thing to bring up here under commissioner items, as you know, we approved the thing with the hatches on the Lime Rock Mine down at Branford, contingent on some soil borings. They didn't pan out, the soil borings that we took, so I had a meeting with the hatches last Thursday, I think it was, and they understood, and so they wanted to look at another piece of property that's adjacent to the one that we did the test borings on, to see if it's any better, so we're going to go back and pull six more borings on a different piece and see if that lines up. So right now, it's, we're just in a holding pattern on the Lime Rock Mine, I just wanted to bring that up and let you know where it's at.
Fair enough, thanks, sir.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner items?
No, sir.
Any county attorney items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got one item I'm asking for board action on. There was a piece of property in Swanee River Estates that the county was deeded back in the 60s. There was a, as the board's aware, we've been trying to dispose of our excess properties and selling them. That piece of property, it's down by the river, was put under, was put under contract, however, it ran into an issue with title insurance, because the developer at the time, as you're aware, if you read a property description, which has a, which is based in a subdivision, it's usually lot, number, block, whatever of the subdivision, and this particular subdivision has multiple blocks and multiple lots. Unfortunately, in the deed to the county, it just said lot, whatever, without naming the block. Now, we know which one's ours, because they deeded out all the other blocks that they had, however, it's not passing title, because we don't have a deed that actually says which one we own, so we can't market the property, or we certainly can't sell the property without having insurable title. So Ms. Hale's office has been the one working, trying to coordinate the title. I ended up trying to locate, one of the things you can do with an issue like this is find one of the members of, even though the LLC is this time inactive, became inactive in the early 2000s, however, all of the remaining, all of the people who are listed as officers of the LLC at the time it was last active are now deceased. So what we're going to, what I'm going to have to do, and I need asking the board to approve, to authorize this, is we're going to have to file a lawsuit to sue the non-existent, or the inactive LLC, appoint a receiver to act on behalf of the LLC, who can then sign a deed to correct that scribbler's error. So in terms of costs that'll be associated with it, there's going to be a $900 filing fee, we do have to appoint an attorney ad litem slash receiver, as I've made the board aware, Joel Foreman is the county attorney over in Columbia County, he's agreed to help us out, just like I'll help them out if they need somebody to fill in on stuff, so he's agreed to do that at a government rate, I've already spoken to him. So I'm asking board approval for me to move forward with that lawsuit, so that way we can clear the title issue.
Do you just need a motion, isn't that...
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions of Mr. Morrison, or do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, one question. Mr. Morrison, how long do you estimate the process?
So what we're going to have to do is, because we have to pretend, like we can find the LLC or the members of it who we could serve, so we're going to have to let the time lapse for publication, to do diligent search, then we're going to have to serve by publication under Chapter 64, and so that has to run in the newspaper, even though we just got to follow the rules on it. Then we got to file the motion to get the receiver appointed, so I expect in all, it will take anywhere from two to five months, just depending on, sometimes your emergency is not the judge's.
Fair enough, I was just curious.
Yeah, but we'll move it at a quick pace, I don't anticipate any issues with it, it's just a matter of getting it done. And I want to get it done as quickly as possible, because there's a buyer who wants it, kind of now, so. But of course, he's not going to buy it without insurable title, which nobody can blame.
So how do we need to state that motion?
Just a motion to, a motion to approve county attorney pursuing litigation to clear title to the Swanee River, what's it called? Uh...
Estates.
Swanee River Estates Law owned by the county.
Estates.
So moves.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Anything else, Mr. Morrison?
No, sir, thank you.
Moving on to general business, item number 11, set the meeting date, time, and location to extend the local state of emergency, Mr. Scott.
We propose to have this next Monday, the 23rd, at 8:00 at the airport. Just want the board to be aware, too, we had some, just a couple of items that we needed to get taken care of at that meeting also, just, we got last minute notice from DOT to, we're okay to award the bid on 8th terrace, we can do that then, or we can wait till the November meeting, none of the contractors between jobs and anxious to get started. Also, along with that, we would have a task order from Lockfeller Associates for the CEI work. Also got two minor things for the, a couple of projects in Branford, the, I lost, for Wyman and Carter, the task order, I mean, the change order for that, and also the payout for the contractor, need to get that approved. We've, but we could, we'll have that on the agenda also, just want to let everybody be aware of that also.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
The, would it be okay to hold the CEI approval thing until a regular scheduled board meeting? Or is there a time of the essence?
DOT needs us to identify who that is, so we don't want the contractor to begin work before we have a CEI in place. We'll be meeting tomorrow to finalize that arrangement and have that information in as a packet item.
Okay, fair enough.
So we got...
Monday?
Monday, the 23rd. Monday, October the 23rd, at 8:00 at the airport.
Right.
For the LLC, local state of emergency.
Commissioner Hale.
Yeah, I think I have an 8:00 online meeting at one already set up, it's not showing up on my calendar, but I believe I do, but I may can just join y'all, like, usually takes 30 minutes.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Well, the other thing is, we're getting to the end of the need to have the declaration extended, we're getting clarity from EOC, but that'll probably be our last one that we have to do. Not that you don't enjoy seeing me at 8:00 home with donuts at the airport, so...
I kind of like the donuts. Not that I need them. Item number 12, additional agenda items, are there any additional agenda items?
Did you approve that? I'm sorry.
What was we approved?
The day and time?
We had a consensus on it.
We had a consensus on it.
Outside of Commissioner Hale, maybe.
If not, I think it's mine or stuff.
Are we good on that?
Yep.
Any additional agenda items?
No, sir.
Seeing none, public concerns and comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Man, you ain't going to talk about tower area.
No, I'll let that go. Still Moses Klepper, 14581, 102nd path. Thank y'all for pulling that item number eight, and I'm only bringing it back because I, I didn't know it was going to be taken off, but all I needed to see was Volvo show up on the back papers and red flag, red state communist own China, not, not a individual in China, but the CCP owns Volvo, all right?
They also own Mac.
Yeah, I know, all right. So, but they don't own Peterbilt, and they don't own Kenworth, and so I run down Kenworth and Peterbilt, and there's, on the back papers in comparison, I don't have the lease money in yet, but on the, on the purchase, all right, on a Kenworth, same truck, or I think better truck, made here, Cummins X15 diesel in it, 510 horsepower, comparable Allison transmission, we say $468,000, we call them American-made product. So reasoning that I'm bringing this out, even though we're not addressing this, I assume those trucks, I didn't know anything about it till I seen the agenda, but I assume we're going to have to be getting trucks, and so, I mean, we've talked about buying local, well, buying Kenworth that's made in Mississippi or up in Washington, or what, all American-made that can be, right here, I hope y'all consider that, and I think we got a hole in our silent bid process or whatever, I don't know the legalities of it, but I know we can't afford, or we shouldn't afford, a half a million dollars going out in 12, 10 purchases, you know, and the silent bid thing ain't working. Mr. Futch sat right over here and said that he could have saved us $200,000 on a three, three-quarter million dollar purchase, year or so back. So the silent bid thing ain't working, fellas. It minimally, I mean, we've talked about having an inventory clerk to save us money going out that hole, we could, I think, I mean, I'm limited on my knowledge, but I want to inspire y'all to start looking. but I wanna inspire y'all to start looking. I mean, maybe we need to hire somebody that could go out and find us the better deals instead of just, I know if we do a bid, it's gotta be silent and all, I get all that. But I don't know that, if we're, if we're limited and we can't go out and just look for the best deal, you know, I mean, that's kinda screwed up anyway. But, I mean, I did this Saturday morning sitting on my porch when I got the package, you know? I got ahold of the guy and the GSA thing saved us a bunch of money. And so, anyway, I don't wanna see, have many dollars going out, especially to Chinese-owned, you know? That's our enemy, guys. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. I need your, I'm sorry. I need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ruben Crespo, born and raised in Brooklyn. Met my wife in Brooklyn, moved to New Jersey when I was 19 years old. 50 years later, I'm still married to the same woman, and every day's a honeymoon. I love her to death. But I had to do something with my life. I had open heart surgery, so did she. And we decided to move down here to this wonderful county of Swanee. I found the most loving people down here. I've born, I'm born and raised, I'm what they call an OG. I'm from Brooklyn. I grew up with the mafia. I gotta lie about that. I grew up in the streets. I was a latchkey baby. My mother was divorced by my father. She was 19 when they met, came to America. She had to support three boys. She lost two. One on the MTA subway, got run over three stops later, picked up the pieces. I had to identify it? No. I sent my uncle to do that. Took a lot of alcohol for him to get cleared that. Then, all of a sudden, my other brother was found in a lake. Who did he think I sent? My uncle. I don't wanna see my relatives for the rest of my life in that image. So, we moved down here, my wife and I, after I had open heart surgery, and here we are today. Two years later, in Swanee County, after COVID and everything, we went through the whole COVID and everything. But what I found down here was some of the most politest, loving people, I mean, caring. You literally wanna take my bags to the car? Really? Why would you do that? Are you starting to steal? Because in New York, we question everything. You wanna steal something out of here? No. Can we walk it to your door? Why? Are you gonna pick my pocket, my pocketbook? No. We bought 120 acres down here. I built New York. I was retired at 50. I was the creator of the AutoCAD, which is what the world uses today, AutoCAD software. I wrote a lot of the programs. I was 19 years old when I started doing that. I was in the computer world back in the, in the days of the 80s when you had the big rooms and everything was cold. And I was doing verifying cards and everything, and then they would, the stackers would pop. And I was writing programs and you had to rewrite the programs. But then I learned from that. I became one of the principal architects in rebuilding New York and New Jersey and the metro area. At 50, when I got retired, they called me back because we got bombed. So, I helped rebuild New York, the metro, the MTA, the PATH, the airports, the Freedom Tower, which is now called the Freedom Tower. Guess what? Ruben, you have a proposal for six months, build the Freedom Tower. And I made 3D models. I was the creator of the 3D modeling. And what happened is, in those 3D modeling creations, after six months, they said you can't use the word freedom. I said, why? They said, nobody wants to rent a Tower One at the tower because they were afraid they're gonna get bombed. I said, but Silverstein's already built it. And they said, forget it. Nobody's gonna rent it. There's only two people that rented that. They were the Chinese on the second and third floor, the CIA. So, we couldn't use the word freedom. That's why today it's called Tower One. Now, I put my life on the line for this country. My parents came through the system, yeah? I became, ultimately, I came from criminal. I went through the system because I didn't know. And then I grew up and went through the school system. I got graduated and I got my diplomas. And then, all of a sudden, I got recognition, and all of a sudden, my world just changed. And I said, I'm gonna make a better world for my children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, generations. And here, we're just giving that away. We're allowing it. But that's, that's another argument. My thing is that here, Swanee County, you guys have, I don't know you guys yet, but you will know me. I promise you that. Bigger than the sandwich, Ruben's sandwich. Ta-da. Okay? Yeah. I sang for the church. I was singing for the Messianic Christian church. I sang with Jonathan Khan. I was his worship leader and everything. I went to the kings. I went to the presidents of the worlds. I went around the world. I've been around the world three times, and I sang. If you can get the head right, the body will follow. So, we gotta get you guys right. We gotta get you all together, body, head. And guess what? The neck will turn the head one way. In my household, I am the head. My wife's the neck. But guess what? I don't want a pain in the neck. She turns me. She knows which way I need to go, and I give her that. I just wanna say that I'm a new person down here, two years, I got 120 acres. I find out now that love wants to build across the street from me. I got 120 acres. I got 18 acres of pure, unadulterated lake. There's no oil. We don't use boats with oil. We row. I got seven grandchildren, three generations on that property that I just bought. And now, you're telling me, well, guess what, boy? We're gonna put a love's truck stop that's gonna diesel and breathe and kill your air and your family. Who do I talk to? Who do I talk to? So, you will be seeing me. And I don't mean that in a bad way. We need to work together because I know you, I know you, and you, and you, and you, and you have family down here. You have a history down here. And you wanna protect that. Yeah, there's money to be made. I came back after 50, retired, and they gave me my price. But then, when I saw what was happening and who was buying us out, the people that were controlling our country, outsiders buying our Pinkerton. Our Pinkerton is old America. We gave that up. We're giving up our history just so that we can sell land? The land that I was living by when I first came down here, Bill Gates owned it. And he was doing a whole different thing with that. But let's not get into politics. All I know is that I'm not a quiet person. I am a silent person, but I'm a recognizable voice. I will be talking to each and every one of you, one way or another, and only to say, how can we make this better? I'm not fighting you. Why would I fight you? I'm not gonna rock your boat. Been there, done that. Let's get together. Let's put a plan. Look at your stitches. This will be more tomorrow if we can get together today. But if we keep playing this charade game of, well, and just pass on these agendas, this is, this is, what's the song says? This land is my land. That's the song, right? This land is my land, right? The Great America, but I think the Great America is down here, down here. I come to find that out because up there, the politics, I will never go back. I'd rather die. And I thank you for holding true to freedom. But we gotta do it together. We may look broken, but we're not. We got big hearts. And what's my name? Ruben. You won't forget it. R U B E N.
Thank you, sir.
I love you guys. Thank you. And I'm sorry I took up your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Item 14, administrator comments.
Just a few things real quick. Had a good, real good meeting Monday, yesterday with DOT, looking at different grant opportunities for us. Thought it went well. Lot of collaboration with staff with that conversation. Be going out tomorrow morning and look at the church north of town for potential fire station property. Staff will be in and come back and report what we, what we find. Need a couple of things. We need to do a RFP for fence repair, the storm-related. We found that we've got storm damage for collection sites, fairgrounds, different places throughout the county. But we need to formally do a RFQ or RFP to do that process. So, it's acceptable. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve us to move forward with that.
Any questions or?
So, the, Mr. Chairman, you need a RFP for basically fence work, fence repair work?
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the RFP process for the fence repairs due to Hurricane Adalia.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Additionally, we need to also, we've got a lot of county properties, mainly parks, but also some other facilities that we have, a lot of the tree limbs are hanging in the trees. And you've seen along the roads where the companies are going in and trimming out the branches. I think we need to go out and do a RFP or a bid. I'm not sure of the format exactly yet. Gotta follow the FEMA rules for reimbursement. But we need to get that taken care of. We don't wanna have a limb fall out of somebody, fall from one of the county-owned properties and bop somebody in the head.
Mr. Scott, I got a question on that. I really wasn't gonna bring it up, but they're down there on 176 Streets, which goes to my nursery, and they've been down there for two or three days. And I thought that's what they were doing.
They're doing, they're not doing on our properties.
Oh, you're talking about our property, county property.
Right, 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 county property.
Inside the parks.
I got you.
Right, parks, libraries, the health department, those are those type of facilities.
Those guys getting paid by the hour or do you know?
I think by the limb.
Man.
I think it's by the hour.
I do too, because they move 50 feet all day.
They're milking that cow.
There's like five people standing there.
Sometimes it takes like two weeks to get on one road.
Yeah.
It's amazing. But anyway. But if you'd like to make a motion for us to bid RFP for that process, also would be helpful.
And this would be an RFP for, what would you say?
Limb, debris removal, limb hangers on county properties.
Is that outside the area of expertise of our tree guys? Or we got inundated with work and safety and time is of the essence type thing?
We could do it. We can have a contractor do it and we get reimbursed for that. If we do it with our people, then we gotta quantify the volume.
Understood, understood.
So, do we have a motion for an RFP for limb and debris removal on county property?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
I move that we RFP for the limb removal for the county properties.
Motion made by Commissioner Perkins. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
One additional thing, Mr. Chairman. Have an opportunity to get the springs and streams cleared out from the debris. DEP is doing that in the river, but they do not do that in the springs and the runs and the streams that we might have in the rivers. There's a group that is the, I lost it. Anyway, it's right here in front of me. Just read it. Natural Resources and Conservation Service, we come in and do that. We work through our, do a request to have them do that. We would include, Water Management include their properties, the town of Branford do their springs also. But again, this would be, let this agency come in and do that for us. If there's any cost, it may be 20%. We should be able to get that back from FEMA, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion? State that one more time, Mr. Scott.
Okay, that is the National Resources Conservation Service and through USDA.
And what was you saying about the 20%?
There might be a 20% match on that, but we would, should be overridden by the state. Or we would get Water Management and other partners to help us with that if it's not reimbursed for.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Perkins.
So, Mr. Scott, that is to clean all debris out of, from the storm in this, in this springs.
Right, the springs, river runs, and also streams.
Okay. I have a motion that we allow those organizations to clean out those streams and river runs and clear debris.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Last thing I just wanna share with you, the last report. We've had 436,000 cubic yards of debris removed so far. And that, you know, I'm just glad that the state is handling that and not us, even though I wish it was quicker. We're not having to touch it, so it's a good day.
How, do you have any idea of what percentage completion we are?
We're maybe halfway.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Mr. Scott, are you privy to say the current, up-to-date dollar figure spent on that debris removal?
The state would not like us to share that, but it's more than what we would wanna be spending. I guarantee you that. It's, so far, it's, you know.
Seven figures plus?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
Mr. Scott, when you say halfway, is that your?
My estimation.
Okay, I didn't say, I don't, I may, I doubt it, but.
Yeah. They're getting about 17,000 cubic yards a day now. They were at 15, 16. Now, they're at 17, so. And I hope they just can get, come back and get all them logs, it's way more, so.
Just glad they're doing it.
Sure.
Commissioner Lynn is Davenport. Have they been doing a lot there or?
Yes, sir. I mean, it's like everywhere else. You see them, they get some piles, they leave some piles. While they pick and choose some fits in that particular truck, some don't. And the next truck drives right by, what didn't fit. I mean, I, I don't know.
I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I knew that was hard to see it.
I can, it still looks bad out there, like Commissioner Hale said. I would say they're, if, they may be halfway in some areas, but in some areas, I'd say they're probably 25%, you know?
Pretty much, I'd say from Travis's district there and just follow river route up to the state park. Yeah, up into my district. It just, it still looks like a war zone.
I think the whole western end of the county is probably the hardest impacted with the, with the tree debris stuff and damage. But, I mean, they're gonna be there. I don't know, I haven't talked to them, but I would say another 60 days easily, you're gonna see these tree trucks.
And with that being said, I mean, like we were saying, I think as fast as they are picking up some of that stuff, they have other crews that are going and catching other problematic things they're trying to address. You know, so you'll see, like you say, you'll see a pile get gone, and then the next day, you'll see a pile.
Put back.
Put right there.
Well, remember too, this is just the first round.
And that's right. And they say, what, three rounds?
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, again, I mean, it'll be, we'll all be thankful.
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, inquiries, requests, and comments. Commissioner Perkins.
Oh, just thankful to be here at a great meet tonight and just wish everybody the best and get back on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mobley.
I'm good. Thanks for all the stuff.
Mr. Lynn.
No, sir. I don't, go Knowles. That's all I got.
Commissioner Hale.
I just wanted to touch back on, I think, what Jimmy had said about the business of the year. We were there, Travis was there, myself, and a few others. It's just great to see, you know, we're talking about the storm. Those businesses, not only those, just those that we recognize that were there, but obviously, our whole community that just really bounced back and put it in overdrive to try to get their, their businesses back open, not only for themselves, but for the employees and their families. but for the employees and their families and our community, obviously. So it was an honor to be there, it's the second year in a row I've got a chance to speak there, and I'm honored to do so. And I was trying, I know Swanee Valley, they won large business, is that right, Jimmy? And then you had Pool Realty, and then you have the young lady right down here.
In-N-Out Nutrition.
In-N-Out Nutrition.
A small business.
I'm gonna tell you, that did my heart well.
And nonprofit was, um.
Paly.
Who?
Powell.
Powell, that's right, Powell's.
Absolutely.
Police Athletic League.
Yes, absolutely, and every one of them are well-deserved, and I just wanted to mention them because, like I said, the meeting, I mean, those folks are a big part of our community, past, present, future. I mean, what they do, it's part of our economic driving force, and we just, we appreciate each and every one of them, and a lot of them are family-owned or people-owned with the co-op and things like that, so we're just proud of that. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. I'm sorry I couldn't attend the Business of the Year, but my youngest son got married this past weekend, and that was him and his new wife that was on the video there that you seen in the front of the boat and skiing behind the boat, so congratulations to them, and just got one more to go. With that, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hale admitted that Mr. Perkins was joining us the other night also.
Yes, yes, I didn't mention, I'm sorry, I just, I said Travis and you're up, but we were all there, and I appreciate.
Commissioner Hale spoke.
I appreciate everybody being there, but the two commissioners, we're not. Is that better? What you got, everybody?
That I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye.